Yes, already over there?
We'll go ahead and get started with our work session regarding wastewater treatment plant improvement, sixty percent design this time. Roll call please.
Mayor Mullis.
Present.
Councilor Preston.
Present.
Councilor Nash.
Here.
Councilor Trout.
Here.
Councilor Goble. Councilor Gorley.
Here.
Councilor Coleman.
Present.
Let the record show we have six present with one possibly not present. I'm not sure with if he's videoed in or not, so.
He's not on there right now.
Okay, so we'll show one absent with six present. Go ahead with our workshop.
Welcome back. Basically, here's a presentation from Murray Smith, who's been working on our ICS, but also working on the design for our wastewater treatment plant upgrade. So we're here to present today sixty percent design and we'll turn it over and let them introduce themselves.
Thank you, Ray. I'm Austin Ramon with Murray Smith. This is Tom Perry. So thanks for having us. We'll be giving you an update on the wastewater treatment plant project. We're at sixty percent design mark, so we're super excited to show you this presentation and go through all the progress that we've made. So the project foundation is something that really stuck with us throughout this whole design process. Make decisions that do the most good for the most people for the longest period of time. That's really what this is founded on. This is the agenda that we're going to go over tonight. Introductions, project history, sixty percent update schedule, and then we'll answer any questions that you have. So introductions, we have Greg, Trish, and Stephen with the city working with us. We have Tom Perry, myself, Jan Miao, Patrick, Jessica, and Justin are staff engineers. So just getting a little bit of the project history, looking back at the original facility plan, Murray Smith took a look at this in 2017. And going over the original plan, it had forty-two million dollars worth of improvements in the next thirty years with a separate peak flow process and very limited rehabilitation of any of the plant assets. So the future rates at the end of the planning period were looking to be about ninety-five dollars a month for the average wastewater customer. So looking at this plan, we thought, what can we do to reduce the peak flow to get it to where it's more easily treated at the plant? So going back to the city's very successful inflow and infiltration abatement projects from the last decade, we took a deeper look at what can we shave off from the peak flow that's coming in from inflow and infiltration to the wastewater plant that we're treating, we're having to treat because it's coming through the system. So the lower line is the existing capacity, which is seven million gallons a day with the wastewater treatment plant. And the upper green line is the capacity that we identified by looking into further I-I abatement in the collection system. So this further I-I pavement will allow for future growth. It will help out your aging collection system and will help maintain our wastewater treatment plant flows at twelve MGD or less. So the map on the right side of the screen shows colors of the basins that are to be targeted for this next phase of the I-I pavement. So this is the existing plant site. You're probably very familiar with it. The upper area on the left of the screen is the bunch of old abandoned buildings that were used for storage and miscellaneous functions. And then the lower plant on the right is the existing facility. It's really a bottleneck in the bottom right corner where all the solids unit processes are. So several challenges with the existing plant. Secondary only, complete mix process, no headworks, which is probably your biggest challenge as there's rags and trash, getting in all the equipment in the plant, tearing it up, reducing its lifespan, and also making its way out into the biosolids. That we're going to farmer fields and the farmers finally said, no, we don't want all this trash in our biosolids. We're not going to take it anymore. So in the early nineties, the tertiary sand filters were added. The biggest problem with those are that they were about a little more than half the capacity of the plant. So you have a seven MGD plant with four MGD filters that created operational challenges.
So.
Yes, sir.
If we change that, will the farmers maybe start taking that back?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
So also, the chlorine contact basin is undersized. The contract operators are actually dosing the chlorine into the clarifier launders to get the correct contact time. The air raid storage basin, the aerators really didn't work very good anymore. It wasn't getting good mixing, so the contract operators weren't even using that when we first came on board. The watering facility has significant code violations. The belt filter press is the bottom left corner photo there. And the belt falls off all the time. It constantly needs attention, so that was an issue. And also very limited SCADA and automation. The operators were called in during the night to come reset alarms that they could have gone all night and not been an issue. They were kind of dummy alarms. This resulted in multiple fines from DEQ for permit violations. So our approach to projects like this is the three R method. Rehabilitate, reuse, and repurpose as many assets, existing structures, processes, areas that you can. Is there, let's make it usable. If done timely, this could be half the cost of new construction. We're talking about coating concrete instead of pouring new concrete, so much more cost effective. So with our new plan, we're looking at an average wastewater rate of sixty-five dollars a month instead of ninety-five. So now's the update for the sixty percent design and where we are. Project status, key milestones. We're in the sixty percent review period now. Ninety percent design development is coming up this fall. We'll wrap up the design and get into regulatory review early next year. Bidding, spring to summer next year, and then construction to start will last a little longer than two years. Funding, where we are with the required VE studies, a value engineering study that is required by USDA and DEQ. When you borrow over a certain amount of money, you have to look at value engineering. That I've been working with Trish on that RFP. That should be coming to you guys soon. USDA and DEQ, we're in the application process now with Brandon. And the USDA preliminary engineering report and environmental report, that review will follow our complete application submission. Permitting side with DEQ, need to wrap up the anti-degradation evaluation for the mass load increase and also work with them to get an expedited permit renewal. You guys are on the docket for 2025, and then COVID hit, and now they're pushing those out even further, so we're working on that with DEQ.
And just so you know, we're operating on an expired license or permit that expired 2010.
So this is the site plan update. This probably looks a lot different than the last time you saw it. Over here, pointer words. So on the left side, the green building up near the entrance road is the administration building. The, thank you, Brandon, the maintenance workshop and storage building is below that. So those complement each other up on the upper part of the site. And in the middle part, there's actually three unit processes combined with the de-watering, headworks, and cake storage there. And also the, just to the north of the aeration basin, the, there's a primary sludge pump station, blower building, and electrical room that have all been kind of combined into one building. Those are the major changes of the addition of the drying beds on the north side of the plant. And so going back to our three R elements, you can see the structures circled in red have been repurposed, reused, or rehabilitated. Done all three. That's as many elements as we could reuse. So here's the site flyover. Hopefully this plays. John. That was a flyover. Now get into some of the unit process buildings. This is a architectural rendering of the administration building. Really like how the architect brought out the timber features for the logging history of City of Sweet Home. This is more of the administration building finishes. We have cedar shiplap, metal standing seat roof, and then CMU veneer below that'll match all the process buildings. So this is the maintenance building. The first bay, as you can see, is a little bit taller than the other ones. That's the service bay. And it's big enough for a vector truck and any other equipment that you want to service. The middle bay is more of a shop for equipment maintenance. And then the far bay is for records and spare parts storage. This is, we see this as being an asset for public works, not just for the wastewater treatment plant. So the headworks, de-watering, and cake storage is one of those buildings that has kind of three processes combined. On the lower left, that the backside of the building, that's where the headworks is with the screens and washer compactor. And then on the left of that bottom picture, that's where the de-watering screw press is that will reduce the volume of the biosolids. And then on the top picture where you can see the backhoe, that is where the cake storage will be for the finished product before it goes to the compost, so. This is another process building that is three uses in one. It's the primary sludge pump station, which takes primary solids from the primary clarifier and sends it to the digester. So kind of on the backside of that, that middle roll-up door, that's where the blowers are housed for the biological treatment process in the aeration basin. On the left side, there's an electrical room there, which would be nice and air-conditioned to keep all the electrical here at ideal conditions. So this is the digester complex. On the left, the bigger tank is the primary digester, and on the right, smaller tank is the secondary digester. In the center is what we're calling the digester complex, and that houses all the equipment. There's a boiler in there, two heat exchangers, three different sets of pumps, and a hot water pump system. So for a cost update, twenty percent schematic design, we estimated to be about twenty-eight point two million. And then sixty percent design development, our cost estimate for that is about thirty point one million. So we are up a little bit, about one point nine million. And I'll go over some of those changes here. Primary clarifier cover. Hey, we want to be a good neighbor. The sludge storage basin had a cover added to it in the nineties because the neighbors were complaining about odor. So this is a great idea that Stephen and Greg and Trish had. Hey, let's add a cover to that primary. Events process control valves, these are for the aeration basin to adjust the airflow to the system. They are not open and closed valves. They can dial in and get to a certain diameter to let a certain amount of air through for the process. So they're more efficient, and we'll talk about some incentives we're getting from the Energy Trust of Oregon in a minute. The thickening building, so the thickening building and the maintenance building were both combined, and on the lower plant site, during the sixty percent process, they were separated out. The maintenance building was moved up to the, more towards the entrance near the admin building to make it more accessible for the rest of the public works fleet that needed to get in there. And so the thickening building stayed down below near the digesters and is now a CMU building and not a prefabricated metal building. Drying beds, great addition. They're going to add operational flexibility. Again, a public works asset. You can bring the vector truck over and dump it. The contract operator will have some breathing room with these drying beds. Administration building, so a few extra offices were added. The IT room was a little bit oversized as well as some of the mechanical equipment rooms, just in case to account for any needs for the future. Maintenance building, grew in size and got separated out from the thickening building, like I said before. Value added to that, just being able to work on equipment and service trucks and be able to store your records and parts. Another thing we learned, the site is underling with rock, so we got a better idea on what it's going to take to remove that rock and got the cost more dialed in on the blasting rockets. So looking forward past twenty-year planning horizon, we have several elements that will make this easily expandable in the future. There's an additional screen, a channel for an additional screen in the headworks building. There's piping for a future primary clarifier if needed, a second one. To the south of the aeration basin, we're leaving that area open for a whole other train for the aeration basin. And then the filter will be able to be expanded to add future capacity. And like I mentioned before, there's some extra office space in the app. Long hold and considerations, we keep going back to the project foundation. Three R approach brings this facility back to life far beyond the planning period of twenty years. We're looking at forty to fifty years. Full plant automation, as I mentioned earlier, operators are coming out now, getting overtime for going to the plant in the middle of the night to turn off alarms. They'll be able to do that from their couch. And we covered the upgrades that will help future expansion. If anything comes out of the blue, regulatory, you find an industrial partner that wants to come to town, they can help out. And finally, the compost, by creating compost and not taking your biosolids to the landfill, you will save over a hundred thousand dollars a year. So funding update, with the rate increase, the city is looking good for local funds at the start of construction, looking to have about seven million dollars to contribute. Earmark funding, city's currently using the two million dollar earmark from the legislature. If we were meeting a month ago, I would have bad news, and I'm sure you all heard about losing the seven million dollar earmark from the lottery bond. But your senator and your representative really went to bat for you guys and got that another seven million dollar earmark approved with Senate Bill fifty-seven twenty-three a couple of weeks ago. That was great news. USDA grant discussions, still talking to them about potentially getting a grant for up to twenty-five percent of the unfunded balance. Energy Trust of Oregon incentives, we currently have nine energy efficiency measure incentives that they're looking at. They've made their way through one, and it's the big one. It's the primary treatment and aeration basin blowers. So by using a more expensive blower system, you get incentives based on the life cycle of how much power that saves you over the course of the life of that blower. So we're looking at at least three hundred and thirty thousand dollars just for this energy efficiency measure number one right now. They've said that's the bottom. It's only going to go up. They're finalizing that now. And it should be noted that that number is not included in the cost estimate that you saw previously. So as these energy efficiency measures come in and give us some incentives, that number is going to go down. And finally, loans, still discussing interim loan funding with DEQ and their SRF, state revolving fund. Now to the schedule, next steps. So we started back in 2018, and now we are about two-thirds of the way through final design. We're looking to get regulatory review and approval early next year, then get to bidding and contracts by mid-spring to early summer, then getting into construction. And then project is looking to wrap up around fall 2023. So the next steps for the project are the value engineering study, proceed with the ninety percent design development, picking up all the review comments from various review parties, continued coordination with Oregon DEQ and on the MPDS permit. And like I mentioned before, that involves the MPDS permit renewal and getting that expedited and us finalizing the anti-degradation valuation for the mass load increase. And we'll continue to work with Brandon on funding from USDA, DEQ, Business Oregon, Energy Trust of Oregon. So that's all I have. I'd like to entertain any questions that you guys have.
Councilor, questions?
Why do we have three different buildings? Not the admin building. Are there three other ones besides that? Are there three besides the admin building?
There's more than three.
Okay.
So my question would be, can you put those together and make it cost less, or is it better to have them spread out? I don't know. I'm just asking.
Well, they really need to be spread out for the way the unit processes work. And if you put them all together, it could actually cost more trying to do a lot in the same space.
You have all the electrical for each of those components. You have all the automation controls for each of those that have to be out of your elements. So the idea is you think about putting some of your localized train of how your power indications go through, but you're still going to have to house your individual units to be able to operate. The headworks, I think, has two or three different operations in it because they're all in an area of each other, but you can't bring the solids back up to the headworks. It's just too far to run.
So why would he ask him?
Thanks, Greg.
I'm done.
Any questions? Do you want to go back and revisit the twenty-eight to thirty million dollar change?
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Why, I mean, I'm trying to understand, is there, did we add some fluff to some of the stuff that, or it was just cost of going up?
Well, there were some changes, like the primary clarifier cover, the separating of the thickening and the maintenance building. So they were in one building together that was going to be prefab metal. So the thickening building is now on its own and it's CMU, and the maintenance building kept the same size and got moved up the hill. So instead of the maintenance building sharing one of its bays with another process, that process got its own building now. That makes sense.
Okay.
One of the processes that we do when we go through this is that we want to solve all the things that need to be looked at as we're constructing, that the problems that were existing, currently existing operationally. We look at how long we're storing sludge in our digestors. We're looking at how much flow our filters can take at high peak flow rates. And we try to solve all these problems when we get from, as we migrate through this process. And you can see, some of our costs have gone down and some of them have gone up. So, you know, and that's just something that happens. Now, as we go from, you know, the twenty percent to sixty percent, you know, and we go from sixty to ninety, some of those costs could still go down. If you look at that bottom footnote, we talked about contingencies with the project. We go from thirty to twenty, so we're hunting in a little bit closer. You can see that the off-site biosolids that was, we were going to take in-house is in that project, but that's not something that we would do until after the project. We still have value engineering, which we have a third-party engineering firm that's going to go through this whole project. They're going to look at materials. They're going to look at, they're going to look at what we've done as our work. We'll have a responsibility to respond to some of those questions that they're going to have as well. It's just part of the requirement that we can do. But what we were tasked with was to solve a problem for this community for a long time. I feel the staff that we have and how we've looked at all the operational concerns, this is a good project. It's a really good project. And I think we can print some down for the sake of trimming it down, absolutely. But that's the question.
Going to be my lead question.
Yeah, I mean, we can look at material. Yeah, I mean, we can, we can look at materials and costs. One of the conversations we're have is in our our sludge buildings. Do we want to have wood tresses versus stainless steel? Do we want, you know, in corrosion? You're looking at down to that level, right? And so if we want to go with stainless steel, those costs will actually go up. So those are all considerations that we have to look at as we construct this whole thing, not only from the parts that we use, the bolts, the buildings, electrical instrumentation. My hopes is, is that this price will come down, will we hit the 28.2 maybe not. But we still have some work to do. So just understand that.
Well, I'm not asking to cut corners, but we're telling citizens originally 28.2. Right now we're at 31.1 and then you're going to go up higher or is, you know, that's, we've got to be able to explain that to the citizen.
Yeah, the, I mean, the maintenance building alone, you know, that's a million dollars, right? We had an old building before that we were storing stuff in that really wasn't functional. Is it a wish list? Absolutely. But those are things that we can look at when we get to engineer value engineering.
And Mayor, don't forget, there's at least $330,000 coming off of that number now with eight more incentives to look at. Now, they're not going to be that magnitude, but they will add up.
Yeah, I'm just wanting to make sure, I'm not trying to cut corners, but in the same token, I've got to come back to my citizens and say, it originally was this, now it's this, and now I can explain that. And that's why I want to make sure we're on base for that.
Got you. I think I would start that conversation when it was originally 42 billion.
Well, yeah. And longer duration project.
Absolutely. And Ed was going to lead them to $95 a month rate.
We originally could ask for an additional 17.9. Now I think we're sitting below 11 somewhere in that area because of what the gift that we got as well. So even though that number looks higher, we're sitting very well with this project to where it's at, I think, dollar-wise incentives. If we are given the direction to trim, you know, we're going to let this be or we're going to come back in two weeks. I think that RFP is going to get put out, so we'll just go out and select an engineer to go through this whole project. And, you know, we'll take a hard look at what we want to cut and don't want to cut, but I think let's not cut just for the sake of cut. Because we're sitting in a better spot financially for this whole plant that we were before. If we can cut things, let's do it, but let's not just do it just to make it, don't make it hit a target. Let's make this plant a good plant.
No, I agree with you, Greg. I just understand my point.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I'm the one that's, you know, it's my head on it, you know, it's our project. So I understand.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I certainly would have assumed that when we started this process, it wasn't going to be 28.2 million. I assumed that it was going to be more than that just because of the way things are. And the longer you wait, the more it's going to be. I agree with you. We have to be accountable for that, but I also don't want to cut corners. If we want aluminum or whatever, they were stainless steel and that's going to last another however many years rather than wood. I would say we need to do what's the best for the project.
Right. And another example is how long do we want to start, be able to cook sludge in our digesters? Do we want a smaller tank versus a larger tank? You know, these are all, do we want to spend that extra to actually get better efficiency out of it? These are all the things that we have to answer. So we're close.
I just want it to be a smart build. I think our community can understand a larger investment if it's going to be a smarter investment.
And Ray, I would like to know what the fines we've had cost us to last however long. Because we had the plan where they would kind of give us a waiver, waiver or whatever it was. And I don't know what that cost was over the last few years, but when you consider if we're going to be doing that again.
The DEQ, since we've entered this process, has been very, very kind to us. When we've been fined, it's been the absolute minimums that they can justify. They understand where we are, what we're doing. Engineering, are in touch with them regularly and to talk about processes and permits. So they know that we're working on it. They know when we got the money back, we got a phone call, congratulations. And they're well aware of the work we're putting into it. I want to say it's less than $5,000 in the four years that I've been, how four years I've been here. They've been very, very kind and understanding. But I'll give you the exact dollar amount.
I don't need it if it's that small, you know. I was zooming.
Well, even prior to that, Dave, it was warning, warnings of sat mouth. Any other questions, counselors? Well, thank you, gentlemen, for coming down. Your presentation, well done. Looking forward to working with you guys.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe next time you want to have to wear a mask.
This time we will close our work session at 6:03.